Presentation for you that would, we would like to go over the highlights, point out a few things for you. But first, I would like to thank our finance director, Brittany White, for doing what I believe is an outstanding job. I'm working on this budget this year. Also, I would like to recognize and thank the constitutional officers, the elected officials, and all of the department heads who do the Omen's effort with their budgets to try to minimize the amount of extra expenses that they had, pardon me, and were mindful of being good steward of the taxpayers' dollars. And also to thank you all of your time and all of your efforts. I know that this is a difficult thing to work through, information here, and it does take a lot of time and effort. And I do appreciate your diligence and your consideration in this budget. And so with that, I'd like to go through our slides. And so we're going to attempt to share the screen here with everyone. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that up for you. So just bear with us for just a second. Okay, there we go. Okay, if you see that screen there now? You should have seen that slide, Newton County 2021 Proposed Budget Presentation.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, first slide, next slide. The agenda for our budget and the things that we have tonight, we're going to talk about them for a minute, a little bit about the Link Peaking Plan, the budget goals, challenges, highlights. We're going to look at the funds, the general fund, special revenue funds, capital enterprise. We're going to talk about the digest and the millage rate, and then we'll discuss some of the next steps that we have after this meeting for the adoption of the budget, and then the adoption of the millage rate, and then there will be any questions that you might have. So next slide, please. As you are all are reading in the book, we developed our strategic plan over about an 18-month period, and we identified five outcomes that are listed below. Ultimately, we want to achieve a safe, well-planned community that respects and values and informs and re-embraces diversity, preserves natural resources, and cultivates economic and social opportunities. And that's what we would like to see ultimately our community develop into. And those strategies, as you will remember, were to cultivate a culture of trust, enhance the quality of life, create a framework for strategic economic development, strengthen and expand facilities and infrastructure to meet the needs of the public, and to provide a safe and secure community. And throughout the budgeting process, and throughout all of our planning efforts for providing services and for planning, for doing projects, completing projects, our employees keep these things in mind and are ever mindful whenever we are, and they do make requests, pardon me, during and through this budget process for additional personnel or for additional funding, or for any of the funding that we are requesting. So this is always in the forefront of any of our discussions, and we are, we'll be entering into year two of our three-year plan, beginning with the next fiscal year, and have accomplished a fair amount. And we have quite a bit left to accomplish, and we'll be continuing to follow these main strategies. We will be changing and adjusting a few of our action items, but we believe that these strategies are still the ones that we would like to pursue in order to guide us to our ultimate outcome. Next slide. Our goals, budget goals, that it conforms to the current millage rate with no increase to the county MNO millage rate, all departments and agencies, the opportunity to present there. We wanted to make sure, as we did last year, that they all had an opportunity to put their request and to answer questions directly, your questions directly. All of the departments began with a zero-based funding, and then they were required to justify the need within their departments. And we did want to make sure that we also funded the addition of Fire Station Four. Those were among the budget goals that we had. Next slide, please. Some of the challenges that we have this year. The salary costs from prior year, we did move all of our employees up to the next step in the step plan that was adopted by the board. During this coming fiscal year, we will be reevaluating that step plan. We believe that this step this year will bring all of our employees' salaries to be competitive with those other governments and the other private industries that we compete with for employees. And so we believe it's imperative that we do move to this next step in order for us to be competitive. We had a net increase in our health insurance cost of 7%. The total increase was 9%, but the net increase to the county was roughly 7%. We do have a challenge of the, because of the COVID-19, there is some economic uncertainty there. We realize that there has been some impact. We do anticipate that there will be some impact in the, in the coming years as well. There's a challenge of fulfilling the capital needs of all of the departments. Certainly, pardon me, our departments do have certain needs in terms of facilities and in terms of equipment. And in order for us to continue to provide services, as the provision of those services and the tools and equipment that are necessary, and the facilities necessary to provide those services are ever increasing, that continues to be a challenge for us, particularly when it comes to equipment and the building facilities. Funding our debt service payments for Fire Station Four will be, will obviously be a challenge, which is an unexpected expense that came up during this past year. However, we do believe we have budgeted for it, and we will be able to make those, but it is a challenge. And any debt service that is incurred is always a challenge on a budget. One of the other challenges that we have are the funding of positions to man, the new Fire Stations Four, and then Fire Station Eight as well. And we are renovating Fire Station Two. Some other funding challenge that we have in the way of position are making sure that we have enough personnel to maintain all of the additional square footages of buildings that we have added over the last several years, the Judicial Center. We're adding square footage to the, doubling the size actually of the Senior Services, and we are doubling the size of the Animal Services Building. And so we need to have personnel who can maintain those areas. The Sheriff's Department is adding a large addition to their administrative area, and the sheriff has also requested additional personnel this year. As we continue to add road mileage to our inventory, we have to make sure that we have enough Public Works employees in order to maintain, to keep the grass cut and to maintain the roads in a safe manner. So we continue to have those challenges in, as we develop our budgets. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights are things that are of particular note. The budget does include an estimated 8% increase in the tax digest totaling an increase in taxes of $3,037,970. The step level raises that I spoke of a few minutes ago, total $1.6 million. The health premium, insurance premium increase was approximately 600, or is $617,891. An increase of $2.1 million to salary and benefits for the new positions that have been requested. $500,000 transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund. Our contingency for fiscal year changes for next year, we have budgeted $372,000 for. We have also included $370,000 in funds for new vehicles for Sheriff's Department. We've included $545,000 as matching funds for $1.2 million in various federal, state, and local grants. And we are going to be doing a major server upgrade to further protect, to help to protect all of the data that we have, and to be able to provide faster, better service to all of our departments for the operation and for the utilization of all of our software. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over to Brittany now to talk a little bit more and in detail about the funds overview, and to talk about the, the number side of this report. So Brittany, if you would, thank you.
Okay, so this slide right here is a snippet of the total, all the county funds throughout the county. So we have the general fund, which is obviously the one that we spend the most time talking about. But we do also have other funds throughout the county that we do need to budget for as well. So we have 13 special revenue funds that we do budget for, as well as five capital improvement funds that we budget for, and three enterprise funds that we budget for. So that brings a total of $104,507,296 as an overall county budget, which is a 6.7% increase from last year. This slide breaks down the revenue source by type. And as you can see, our total proposed revenue for FY21 is $75,405,206, which is a 5.1% increase from last year's revised budget. And our general fund, obviously, we have to have a balanced budget. So our general fund expenditures also match the $775,405,206. And most of this, obviously, is coming from salaries and benefits that being 60% of the overall budget. And this is a 5.1% increase from the FY20 revised budget. This is a snippet of the page in your book that details all of the requested or proposed budgets for the departments. I know this is a little hard to see on this screen. So if you need a little more larger view of this, this can be found on page 12 of the proposed budget book. But I do believe in prior meetings, you have seen something that resembles this. So I kind of will not go over this in detail right now, but if you have any questions towards the end, we can answer them. Now we'll get into our special revenue funds. We do have 13 special revenue funds in the county, and these are funded by different fees, taxes, that are possibly on speeding tickets. Your E901 revenue is generated by the special tax that's on your cell phone bills. Your fire fund is funded by a special millage that is for the fire district. So these are funded in various ways, but this also does help to bring in additional $12,486,062 in revenue into the county that your general fund is not having to subsidize. And the county right now has five special revenue funds, because we still do have remaining funds in our 2005 SPOSS. So our main two capital funds are your capital improvement funds and your impact fee funds that rotate on a year-to-year basis. And then your SPOSS rotates in as we still have dollars in that SPOSS fund to be utilizing. But we propose this year that we will be spending $21,453,190 in our capital funds. And most of this is coming from your 2017 SPOSS, as we continue to work on our projects that were bonded, that we're working on the fire stations, the senior services, the animal control, your sheriff's building. So all of those should be wrapped up within FY21. And now we'll move on to the enterprise funds. We have three enterprise funds, which are the water fund, the solid waste fund, and then Gaither fund. And we propose that the budget for, total for these funds will be $16,116,028, with the water fund being $9,654,956,000 of that. Solid Waste Fund is $6,86,935, and the Gaithers Fund being $374,137. And then the Gaithers Fund also includes factory shaw, so they both are in that fund. And here is the graph of the county taxes levied versus the millage rate over the last 10 years. So you can see, even though we do anticipate keeping the millage rate the same at the 13.43, we do estimate to see an increase in taxes due to the tax digest, increase of 8%. Here is another graph that shows the total taxable value of real and personal property for the county levy over the past 10 years. And here's just a graph that shows the history of the county MNO for the last 10 years as well. So our next planned steps in this process will be June 16th, we will hold our first public hearing for the proposed budget of FY21 at 6:00 PM. We do have to have two public hearings for this, so we plan to hold the second public hearing on June 23rd at 5:00 PM. And you are able to hold your second public hearing on the same day that you adopt your budget. So we plan to adopt the FY21 budget at a special call meeting on June 23rd at 6:00 PM. We then will have to adopt a millage rate after we adopt the budget. So the plan right now is to hold the first and second public hearings on the millage rate at 11:00 AM and 6:00 PM on July 21st. And by July 27th, we will hold the second public hearing on the millage rate at 6:00 PM. And then we will have a special call meeting to adopt the millage rate at 6:30 PM. And of course, this is all tentative, but right now, this is the plans to have our budget adopted by July 1st, and then we can have the millage rate adopted by July 27th. And that is the end of our slides. So we will, Lloyd, do you have anything else?
No, I don't have anything else at this time. Certainly, we're here to answer your question.
Thank you, Lloyd and Brittany, for that detailed presentation. We're going to start with Commissioner Edwards. Sir, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I do have an initial question. So when will we know for sure the exact or precise estimate of the tax digest?
I talked to Dana today before the meeting, and they're still inputting numbers from the Tax Assessor's Office into the software system that she utilizes to calculate the total tax digest. I've been given an estimated time of possibly mid next week. But there's also, people do have time to appeal taxes, and so that number could initially change, but we should have a rough estimate by next week.
Final numbers, though, will not be until the end of June. Typically, I believe the final numbers have to begin by June 26th or 27th. That allows the Board of Assessors, or rather, the Board of Appeals to hear all of the cases, in the event people want to appeal their assessments. So there is a lag time in there, and that is why we have to wait so long to adopt the millage rate, because that won't be established until after the appeals period is up and all of those appeals have been decided.
Thank you. Thank you, Lloyd. Thank you, Brittany. So, which brings me to another question, and this may not be a question for now, but for this particular forum, but what, because of the COVID thing, are we looking to extend the deadline to appeal tax assessments?
I have not heard, I have not heard that. I don't believe so, but I have not heard anything to that effect. I can certainly, I can certainly ask Marcus tomorrow, but I have not heard that.
Okay, thank you. That's all for now, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mason, you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lloyd and Brittany, I wanted to ask, I know on the last budget meeting that we discussed, we were trying to find additional, I think it was $300,000. Have we been able to find those funds or reallocate those so that we can balance the budget where we won't have to take monies away from, I think we were talking about vacation and some other things like that? Were we able to rectify that as of yet?
Yeah, Commissioner, the chairman and I discussed this and discussed the budget at length, and also discussed with Brittany. And what was decided was that we would reinstate those funds that we had initially removed from the budget. And so they are in the budget. They are back in. So
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The monies that were for the Christmas incentive were placed back in the budget.
Okay, great, because I didn't see that, and I may have missed it, but I just wanted to make sure that we had provided or got a resolution to that, because I know that was in discussion the last time. So thank you.
But it's back in.
Chairman Mason, that is found in the non-departmental department under other employee benefits. So that's where that number was.
Ah, okay. Thank you so much, Brittany and Lloyd, for that clarification.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Sholz, you have anything?
I have two questions. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Lloyd, a lot, some of our services, or a large portion of our services, are state-mandated services. How many of these mandated services do you anticipate will be affected by the, you know, a lot of them are unfunded mandates, but how many of them do you anticipate will be affected by the state cutting their budget 14%?
Well, I think that there may be some request for us to provide additional assistance to some of the state agencies. I believe that that may occur. I think what's important is to, to try to determine what the 14% reduction is, if the reduction is from a requested budget, or if the reduction is from this year's budget, to take a look at that, to see what, to see what those budget cuts amounted to. It could be that some of those cuts were expansions on certain programs that would not necessarily impact us. It could be that they were programs that did. But I think in that case, that we would probably just be requested to provide additional funding for those agencies. I've not heard from any of those agencies, other than the request that you all saw, anything further than that. And so I don't, I don't see that there would have been any other requests. The requirement, and some of that may change with whatever happens with the state as far as what the final budget does. If the state decides to shift some other responsibilities to the local governments, then obviously, that will have, will most likely have an impact. But we won't know that until the legislature goes back in session. But at this point, I would say that, that we're going to have to do some wait and see on that. I don't see that it's going to significantly impact us otherwise.
So my next question has to do with, you mentioned that we have increases in staffing that are related to specific expansions, such as the expansion of the animal control, the expansion of the Judicial Center, the expansion of senior services, the new fire stations. Can you give us a dollar amount, and I know you don't have to do that today, but can you give us a breakdown of the dollar amount that is specifically tied to those expansion of services?
Yeah, we can, we can give you, yeah, we certainly can. I mean, I can give you the cost of those individual personnel. Do we have that breakdown?
Yeah.
I think we'll be able to give it to you right now. Let me see if Brittany can pull up her spreadsheet.
I just, I think it's important that we segment that information out so that we understand what the cost is of those specific expansions. For example, when we talk to our constituents, and we are adding, you know, their concern is that we're increasing their taxes by virtue of their home values going up. But in several of these districts, I know, for example, in my district, in the northern part of the district, there's going to be a new fire station. So some of their costs for their ISO rating will be offset by that new fire station. So I think that it's important that we really have a clear picture of what these costs are.
Okay. Yeah, the fire services total, we're looking at $430,250. And that, now, the totals that we're giving you are based, not, those are not full-year salaries. Those are based on staggering the hire dates with half of the hires being in for all of the with half of the hires being in for all of the departments, any, any department that brings in people. The hire dates being descend, at the end of December and the first of April. So fire services is 430. Development Services is adding a stormwater, a stormwater manager. And that is 37,000. Roll.
I'm going to go.
She's going to go on, I don't know if you can, okay. And then the facilities is adding custodial personnel and one maintenance tech. A maintenance worker, and that is for a total of, of 91,000 for this year.
Okay, now, let me just make it clear. What I'm interested in are exact, the expansion of the services with the new facilities. So I can understand facilities, I can understand fire service. But is development services related to? Okay, so that one, that one I, I'm going to scratch out.
So you just want senior services and the animal services then?
And, and the fire depart, the fire, the new fire stations? And what you said we had to add for the expansion of the Judicial Center?
Okay. The to, the total for the expansion of the Judicial Center. I'm going to have to actually do a little bit of a calculation on that because, well, I can give you this number. It'd be 84,000.
Okay.
Okay. The total for senior services, these are part-time personnel. The total's 36,000. The total for animal services, 105,000. And the total for the fire services is
Okay. All right, I, I think that answers my questions for right now. And these are all additional personnel, additional staffing for those facilities.
Yes, and that, those, all of these people will be, half of the people will be hired at the end of December, by December, December 30. And the other remainder will be hired April 1.
Okay. So we can expect an even higher labor number next year?
Yes.
Full year?
Yes, that'll get, we did have the full year salary then, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else next?
No, not at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Henderson, you have anything, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Is, is, I was hearing, so our, so the taxes will be going up about 68%. I mean, I'll give you the exact number.
Hold on one second, let's pull that sheet back up. Okay, there's a propose, this is still an estimate until the tax digest is
Absolutely.
Complete, but right now, an 8% estimated increase in the tax digest would be $3,037. Or hold on, $3,037,970.
Correct. So the estimate, so that means per home, on a hundred thousand dollar home, be how much more?
We can give you an estimate on that, Commissioner. And we're looking at approximately, and this is very rough because we don't have all of the figures. But we estimated that it would be around $30 per hundred thousand. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar home, an additional $30 per year. If you have a $300,000 home, an additional $90 per year.
Absolutely. So, so while I was just thinking, and I was, I was listening to Commissioner Schultz and I was thinking about Commissioner Edwards. And with the new fire station coming online, that would mean for, for those districts, that the ISO rating would go down. And that would offset the additional money that they would pay for taxes. Otherwise, if the ISO rating came down, could come down about $40. And so that, that would mean that would offset the taxes that they, possibly more taxes they would pay. It would be offset. But the citizens, but the citizens, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, who are in town, who are paying an additional $30 per hundred thousand dollar home, there will be no offset. There will be taxes that we would have to, you know, have to pay, you know? And it's just estimate, I understand that, just an estimate. So I guess what I, what I'm asking, and what I, what I left at the last budget meeting was that I was thinking that, it was a question that Commissioner Cowan had raised. And, and it was about the 19, I think, million dollars of fund balance, of extra cash, emergency cash, et cetera. And it was going to, what I thought we might look at too, or we was going to look at, was if we used a little bit of that money to offset that increase from debt, because these are hard times, because people are struggling. And, you know, and some people have told me, said, well, that's kind of our money, that's our money too. And so if we offset debt, so that the tax will, will, will remain of just probably, in my thinking, same as they were of the last budget that we have, if possible, a little less than that. So what happens to those figures or do we have those figures?
We, we did take a look at that. Commissioner Cowan had mentioned the possibility of maybe a million dollars out of the fund balance, or the cash reserves, rather. A million dollars would reduce the military down to roughly by one full point, which would be 12.4, 12.431. And by reducing, reducing that by by that amount would, did we get a?
You there Lloyd?
I think, well, I was looking to see if we had the number. And I think we did, and I just don't think we've got the calculation right in front of us here. We had, it was 30.31. We'll see if we can't get it, how much it would mean to a hundred thousand dollar house or to, or one mil drop.
Oh, okay, and I, I would appreciate those numbers. And just let me kind of conclude with this. You know, I, I personally, you know, in, in, as towards, I guess, part of the people in town that I represent and the ones that I've heard, heard from, it would be somewhat, and they believe a little unfair for two thirds of the county, by a, a reduced, reduced rate in their fire services. It would mean they pay less money and then we in town pay more money. And I think that would be, in my opinion, the fair way for to, for the taxes to be levied for the people. And, and I go back to what I said earlier, these are hard times, people struggling. Some people, even, even if you give them a reduction, they're still not going to be able to pay their taxes in a timely manner. And if we've talked so much about the COVID 19 and how much it has affected us jobs and so on. And so it's a big struggle. I, I believe, I think it is only fair that we look at that, implement that for the citizens, maybe this year, and see how next year turn out. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cowan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think Commissioner Henderson covered exactly what I was going to talk with Lloyd about. He and I talked this afternoon regarding the impact of a million dollars out of the fund balance used to supplement the budget. He's explained pretty much what the impact would be to everybody right now. And of course, we discussed also what the additional tax, taxes would be based on an 8% increase in the digest, what that would cost. Lloyd, I think that the only other thing that we discussed this afternoon, besides that, was the, again, just make sure everybody understands, moving money out of the fund balance is not my preferred method of doing things. I think with this COVID problem and some of the possibility of, of reduction in sales tax, I think we're going to end up getting into the fund balance anyway at the end of the year. I may be wrong, I don't know, but I'm just not sure the revenues are going to be where we hope them to be. But either way, we'll have to, we may have to tap into that at some point. But Lloyd, you and I discussed, talking about the services that were demanded. And we've got, if you'll just cover the number of additional things that we've already approved that's going to require additional staffing for the benefit of the other members.
And since we are, we are adding, we're doubling the size of the, of the senior services building. And thankfully, we're able to cover a lot of the need there with part-time personnel. But we did need to add people there. We're, we're, currently we're serving about 400 clients over there. And the number continues to grow. But the space has doubled, so we've got to have personnel there to, to take care of that, to really to do the maintenance and the cleaning on a regular basis there. The animal shelter right now has also doubled its space. And essentially, we've got two, pardon me, we have two separate buildings. And they're going to have to be staffed at all times with, with, with people. And unfortunately, what we have to do sometimes right now even is, is on weekends, we sometimes wind up with only, unfortunately, with one person in the building, which is really not a very desirable situation. And so with all of the, as we continue to grow in population, we continue to have the calls for, as, as the animals' problems continue to grow, we've got to have people to, got to have people to staff and to take care of the animals. We've also got to have officers to go out into the field to do that. We added, I believe, 80,000 square feet over there at the, at the Judicial Center. And we had to have additional janitorial and custodial personnel in order to take care of that. But beyond that, we have not had enough custodial personnel to take care of the other buildings on, on a, on a regular basis, really, the way that, the way that we should and to do some of our own maintenance. Right now, we have a part-time person that we've been able to, pardon me, hire. And he has begun doing some of the routine maintenance things that have been needing to be done all along. Things like painting doorways and rail, handrails and things like that, that we have just neglected. First time, some areas of the admin milling have been painted since it was opened in 2007. And so we need to do a lot of those types of things. And so we need additional personnel for that. The fire stations, as you know, we have to man those. And we need to have, we really need to have four men per shift, which means we need to have at least 12 men assigned to a station. And currently, right now, we have, in most cases, we have three men on a shift. But there are still some instances where we only have two men on a shift. And so we, we have to get our stations up and our staffing up in order to make sure that we have enough personnel to respond when, you know, when we need to. But we are continuing to, to provide, you know, these services. I mean, development services, we currently have three inspectors. Sometimes they're having to inspect and to conduct 20 or 30 inspections a day. Realistically, you can really do about 15 inspections a day and give them the just, the, the, the just, the due consideration that, that, that they should have. So, you know, we're going to need people in, in several different, in several different places as, you know, as, as time continues, as we continue to have built homes and have construction going, we're still going to need to continue to have these people. So as our population grows, we get more demands. Every time we add a mile of road or a subdivision street, now we have to maintain curbs. We have to maintain the asphalt, the pavement, the sidewalks, all of those, pardon me, the rights of way, all of those things. So we are continually putting demand on our employees. And we can't continue to do that without making an investment in the number, in the employees. And by that, not only in salaries and benefits and all, but also in having sufficient numbers in order to do the work, but also in having sufficient equipment in order for them to do the work. And to make sure that that equipment is in good shape. And becoming more and more expensive every day, as you all know, in order for us to, to purchase equipment. We had, we purchased a milling machine this year in order for us to patching, that milling machine was a little over $360,000. We have a tractor that we use to mow bush hog with, to use to mow the rights of way. That tractor was $67,000. We had to have a transmission repaired on that tractor, $11,000 transmission repair. So our costs are continuing to go up. I, I understand that, you know, we have to be, we are trying to be as frugal and we need to be good stewards with our money. And I truly believe that we are doing a good job of that and, and making every attempt to do that. But we also have to understand that our public is demanding more and more of us every day. And so we have to make sure that we provide what we need to provide. And as, as we grow, as we continue to grow, the demand for public services continues to grow. And that means more people, that means more expenses, that means more equipment and so on and so forth.
Lloyd, just to follow up on that, the two fire stations that we're about to open, have we already ordered the fire engines for that?
Yes, one.
I knew we ordered one, I didn't know if we'd done both of them yet.
Yeah. We have two that are on, that have been ordered and are under construction. And there's a third one, pardon me, that we're going to be getting that we are, will be, pardon me, will be ordering. And I, I'm not, I think that one goes to one of those, maybe, or that may be a replacement for an older engine. But yeah, we've got, we have to order those things 12 to 14 months out before we actually need them because it takes them a while to build them. And I know we have two that we've already purchased.
Thank you, I, I just wanted the other board members to hear what we had discussed this afternoon regarding the budget and some, some staffing issues.
You know, and, and I understand it's, it's a very difficult issue. I mean, I like to pay any more taxes than anybody else, but it's a, we have a choice. I mean, we can, we don't, if we want to continue to provide services and the people want us to provide services, then, you know, there, there, you have to, there, there is a cost involved. And, and they have to be, that they have to be paid for. So, you know, we don't have to provide all the services, we don't have to do all the things that we do. But if we want to continue to provide those at the level that we provide them, then there, there's a cost associated with it.
Okay, thank you Lloyd.
Thank you, sir. Anyone has anything else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm gonna be on a call tomorrow with the governor's office if there's any questions that anyone has that they would like to submit to me. To ask about the governor's budget. And how he proposes to address the COVID nineteen. Can you just ask the rest of the board to submit those to me tonight, please?
Sure will, sure will. Guys, I wanna make one last plea, well, I ain't gonna say my last plea. But I I wanna remind us that, you know, it took a lot of hard work to. Get our fund balance where it is, get our cash reserve where it is now. And that's something you guys ought to be proud of. And, you know, I think those funds ought to be used in when it's when it's emergency, when it's time, and they absolutely have to be used. And we don't know whether they gotta be used right now. And we, you know, that's a prepared budget here. That's been prepared, but we don't have to use them. And I'm hoping that we can hold fast on what we have already built on. You know, we are able to, we'll be able to provide services, services that people came. To this courthouse where I'm at now and asked for us to provide. Many a nights, they came and they was very vocal, that they needed. You know, I can't help but to say it again, the young lady that came up and who was in tears and who was screaming to the top of her lungs. Saying that she, that her parents couldn't afford to pay their insurance. And we bowed as a group, as a board together, that we would definitely do something about that. And we we asked, asked Mr. Kerr and asked this board, can we put. Can we put this at the top of the list to make sure we get it done? So guys, I I pray and I hope that we hold hold fast to that on what, on what we, what we said we would do. Just to make sure that we let the citizens know that we do, we we understand, and we want to do everything we can to make sure. That we do what we said that we was gonna do. You guys.
Yes, sir.
My screen went blank.
I can see you over here. Yeah, you're shown over here.
If anyone, okay, if there's no one else that has anything else. Who's gonna adjourn this meeting? Anyone have anything else? Well, I see a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
District three, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second by District one.
You guys are breaking up on my end, I can't understand.
District three.
Okay, it's motion by District, District three and second by District one, all in favor?
District one is an I. District two is an I.
District three is an I.
Thank you, guys.
District five is a.
Thank you, guys, this is me. Thank you, this meeting stands adjourned, thank you so much.